Chambers, there is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here, item A approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 13, 2016, and item B call for a meeting instead Tuesday, September 27, 2016, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion for A and B?
Second.
Motion by Boyle, second by Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution, item D approving applications for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer. There are motion to approve item D and adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Boyle, second by Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here, item A approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 13, 2016, and item B approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 20, 2016.
No move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the consent agenda, items A through K. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Kraft, seconded by Duda. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is recognition and proclamations. There's a recognition of county employee Julie Talty retiring from the Douglas County clerk of the district court after 29 years of service. Don't believe they're present this morning? With that, I would...
This is your push to absence.
(laughing) I would ask for a motion to approve. Motion by Boyle, seconded by Morgan. Please vote. Presentations, we have three. The first one is from the League of Women Voters. Elaine Johnson... I'm sorry, citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Next are presentations. League of Women Voters, Elaine Johnson, presentation on how important it is to vote and the special note of September 27 as National Register to Vote Day. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. I'm Elaine Johnson, president of League of Women Voters Greater Omaha. Told I need to give my address, which is 16829 Pierce Street. Thank you. Good morning again. Thank you so much for letting us today. We're very excited about our election cycle and all the efforts that we are going through to not only get people to register, but then encourage them to vote and to do many education presentations around that. We're especially excited about Voter Registration Day, which is next... Am I standing in the wrong place?
No, that was... We just turned it on so we could hear you better.
Okay, sorry.[317.02][317.02](laughing) Usually I have a pretty loud teacher voice. Apparently not using it. Next week, Voter Registration Day, we have many, many presentations going on during that day, and I just wanted to start by saying that I am a real news junkie. And so, I was watching a news program the other day, and it stated a difference between those people who are registered to vote and those likely voters. So, I went to my favorite polling place, Gallup, to try to find out what created that difference, and I found out these items, which are, one, the thought given to an election, and some people say quite a lot, and some people say very little; two, is knowing where to vote, and we're proud to help with that on every occasion for which we get a chance; and voting record in previous years, and I'll talk about that in a minute; voting in the same precinct for one or more years, that's a likelihood of voting; and having a specific plan for voting, which includes early voting, absentee ballots, and so forth. And we have been very active helping with those, too. And then people who vote in all elections, not just national elections. So, that is... That's what they say is the difference between a registered voter and a likely voter. Well, we know that our democracy works the best when everyone votes, because that's truly a representation of all of our citizens. So, we're a little disturbed by the statistics of voting in and around Omaha. For instance, last year, 45% of registered voters in Douglas County actually voted. So, that's pretty dismal, I think. I'm sure you'll agree. And that means that nearly 179,000 people did not vote who were qualified... who were registered to vote. So, that's a sad, really sad statistic. And just for your interest, in Sarpy County, only 44% of registered voters actually went to the poll. So, we have a huge mission, you know, and our mission is to close the gap between registered voters and likely voters, and to get registered, all the voters that we can. Well, I'm not going to stand up here and pretend that I do that, because I'm speaking for a large cadre of people in our organization for whom that is their main goal day-to-day, and they're working very hard in this election season to make that happen. So, we do our usual things, which is to register voters. Many of us are deputy registrars, so we can be very active in that way, and we actively seek out every effort, every effort and every event for which we can have a presence. So, we really enjoy that process, which is our usual process. And right here, I would like to thank Brian Cruz, the new election commissioner, who has just been so cooperative and so encouraging in our efforts to get out the vote. He's supportive of our work. In fact, this is how supportive he is. He's heading with us to Burke High School for one of our high school presentations and registration events. So, he really has his hands in what we're doing and really is encouraging us. So, we also are ready to print our voter's guide, and that is one of our flagship projects. We do that in each election. We did one for the primaries, and of course, we're doing one for the general election. And this year, that voter's guide will also be translated into Spanish and distributed through appropriate channels for that. That should be coming out the first week of October. That's our goal there. I'm looking over here, because these are the people who are doing much, much, much of the work. And of course, we also will have an online version of that, easy to find, vote411.org. So, be sure to look for that. But actually, I would like to say a few more words about newer activities that we have been doing that you might not be as familiar with. One is, of course, our youth outreach, which is huge this year. In the spring, we actually provided classroom instruction to 177 young people, and of course, those are largely government classes for senior-level students. And then registering them to vote, and apparently, when we do our little presentation with what you do when you decide not to vote, it's very effective, because a lot of them do decide to vote following those presentations. And right now, we're doing five or six locations every week of voter registration. We have done concerted effort on campuses and OPS high schools, of course MCC, and we're repeating all of that right now, right now as we speak. Of course, I said after our presentation today, we'll be having a representation at Burke High School for that to take place. Also, we're kind of excited this year that we have a Go Vote Omaha television show on KPAO. I'm sure you all watch that religiously, but please tune in. Mondays for live candidate debates, and Tuesdays for our recorded programs on policy initiatives that we do. And in our candidate debates, of course, we follow our mission, which is to be political, but nonpartisan. We never, we never ever support a particular candidate or a particular political party. All of our programs are for voter education. So, today, we are again launching something brand-new, and we think it's kind of fun. We're going to start chalking. We have some people who have designed some really... Some fun things, and we have students involved in that, too. And of course, we always get permission to do some chalking, encouraging people to vote in a creative and artistic way. We also have some messages that are going to be done in Spanish, again, in appropriate areas, and we're being assisted with that through the Heartland Worker Center. It's just a really creative way. I think you'll notice that... I think you'll notice that some of the chalk creations are even in like 2D and, you know... So, I think it's going to be a real fun way to get out the vote. You should be seeing messages, we hope you are, at the DMV offices, libraries, bus stops, football stadiums, college campuses... Yes, I am reading this. Nonprofit organizations and businesses around town. In fact, I'm going to feel pretty hurt if you can actually go about your daily business and not see one of our chalking creations.[838.69][838.69](laughing) So, anyway, we have also put out a press release today about our chalking efforts and invited members of the media to come and take a look at that. So, once again, you know, in this election season, we have heard a lot of talk about things that would make our founding fathers roll over in their graves. I'm sure you, you know, heard that phrase. Well, we firmly believe that one of the things that would cause quite a rollabout in the old Boston cemetery is people, this many people, who can vote, who are not voting, you know, or who are prevented from voting. We feel that that is something in a representative democracy that would be a serious problem for our founding fathers. So, thanks again for letting us have a presence here today and for allowing me to visit with you. Just want to say one more time, I am just the voice today. There are so many of our 200 members who are working so hard at collaborations and having a presence throughout town, registering voters and encouraging voters and educating voters. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, and we do have a couple lights on. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Oh. Thanks for coming. You folks do great work, and I don't think there's anything more important to our democracy than people voting. So, kudos on the work that you do in this election cycle and that you've done for many, many years. All the women in my family have been great admirers and members of the League of Women Voters. We follow your voter guide religiously, and I just can't say enough about the super work that you do.
Thank you.
And how much it helps making our democracy function. And certainly, I mean, you hit the nail on the head, voter turnout is everything. And if we can get that 45% participation number up, that would be a huge benefit to everyone.
Yes.
The axiom that I've always used is if you don't vote, you don't count. And part of being a good and responsible citizen in our republic is paying taxes and exercising your franchise to vote. And I think that those things are important to making our democracy function, and what you do is essential in helping us do that. So, thanks a lot, and thanks for coming today. I look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Morgan?
Just want to say thank you to yourself and the League. They do a great job. And lastly, I just want to thank you, and I know I speak for Commissioner Boyle on this, he and I are finance co-chairpersons. You have a person always at our finance meetings, and we really appreciate that. I've thanked her many times for participating and being there, and that's appreciated.
Good, thank you so much.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, Commissioner Morgan really brought up the point that I wanted to bring up, too, as well, is that you really serve as a watchdog for the public in addition to the public service that you provide. And you're so enthusiastic, I think I'm going to register to vote.[1057.04][1057.04](laughing)
I find it hard to believe you're not registered.[1061.16][1061.16](laughing) But I do have the material.
Okay. No, your enthusiasm is really wonderful. Your delivery was spectacular, and the work of the League of Women Voters is really essential to delivering the message. So, many of us who are... Who have a party label, we don't necessarily... I certainly, myself, I don't vote the straight ticket, but so sometimes the things we say are kind of discounted. And so, that's why it's so important that the League of Women Voters, who is widely respected as neutral and sort of the Swiss government of politics.
I love that.
You give us information that's essential, and whether it's... Sometimes it might be painful, sometimes it's not, but so you really are the neutral ground to get information, and people really need to and do appreciate the work you do. One last question I want to make, and I brought it up a couple weeks ago, and Brian Cruz is here, and I admit, he is a really terrific... I said the best election commissioner we ever had, and of course, I was one, so that's said quite a bit.
Oh.
But anyhow, no, he's really terrific, really unbelievably good. I'm very concerned about the... And I am against the death penalty disclosure, but I'm concerned about people who are opposed, or for that matter, who are for it, voting incorrectly because of the way the... Would you speak just a moment if a person, you know, do it in your neutral way, but if a person is for it, what's the correct vote? If they're against it, what's the correct vote? It is kind of an odd situation. Could you talk a moment about that?
Happy to. Thank you for asking. Yes, although we are nonpartisan, we are political, and we do have some positions that we support or oppose, and we do oppose the death penalty and as a national organization. But I think, as Mr. Boyle pointed out, there's... The ballot wording is so confusing that we sort of, just for our issue, if you oppose the death penalty itself, you will vote to retain the repeal of the death penalty. If you... You can find out for yourself what you do if you support the death penalty. But that is... We just say keep retain in your brain, you know, because otherwise, when you read... When you read that ballot wording, it is very confusing. And we have actually had three half-hour programs on KPAO, educating about the death penalty, and we had a death penalty forum... Was that just last week? Oh, my goodness. Just last week at UNO, and we had a very balanced panel there. So, even when we do actively support an issue, we still try to provide both sides of an issue, or if there are more sides, we try to represent the multiple sides. But for our purpose, we want to retain the repeal, and it sounds pretty contradictory and confusing, but...
So, if you are... Just in all fairness, if you are in favor of keeping or bringing back the death penalty, you vote to repeal?
(laughing) You will vote to repeal, right.
Okay, so if you're for the death penalty, you vote to repeal.
To repeal.
And if you are against the death penalty, you vote to retain.
Retain the repeal.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate that, and again, thanks for the terrific work that you folks do. It's just... It's essential. Thank you.
Visit us on our website and on KPAO. Thank you so much.
We have a couple more lights.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
That's fine.
And I'm a strong supporter, as is my wife, of the League of Women Voters, and I know you accept men now.
Oh, we have... I can't think what our total is now, but it's pretty high. Yeah.
But my mother and father also were supporters, as are all of my children and their spouses. So, I just want you to know, our family is with you.
Thank you so much.
Because you do a very good job of remaining nonpartisan and getting the information out.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to ask you one additional question, and I don't want you really to answer, but it may not be appropriate. But on the bond issue that the county has on public safety, if there's a chance that your group wants us to come out to your office, and I've been there, the new office, we'd be glad to come out and talk about it sometime, and possibly even if it's after hours, I'd bring Mark Foxhall, our director of corrections, Commissioner Boyle's the chairman of that committee, and I'm sure he'd want to come, too. We'd be glad to come out, several of us, I know, Commissioner Kavanaugh, our chairperson, all of us would like to make sure that you have all the information, and then if we can get support, I personally would like to have that for this bond issue. So, let us know if that's possible, or there's a desire to listen about that issue.
Yeah, remember, I talked to you at one of our dine and discuss venues, which is very... We get a very good turnout for that, and we're always looking for speakers. Unfortunately, we're kind of in flux right now. We've been kicked out of the... We've been kicked out of the Garden Cafe at Rock Brook, because they're going to start closing at noon, and our meetings are at night, and so we're looking for a new venue for our dine and discuss, but we are always looking for people to speak to us, too. So, we might set something up, like a potluck or something, in our own office.
Yeah, I did offer to come out some evening.
Yeah, it was a pleasure to meet you.
Just to listen to someone else, and thank you for your work.
Thank you for even being there, right. That was great, thank you.
Right. So, we'll do that. We'll try to find you a place, maybe Commissioner Boyle's living room or something.[1451.91][1451.91](laughing)
That'd be okay. Are there any other restaurants we were kicked out of?[1456.23][1456.23](laughing)
We've been kicked out of the best restaurants.
I know, it's me.
No, I'm just kidding.
Me, too.[1462.73][1462.73](laughing)
Check on Jack and Mary's, and I may be able to help you there.
We used to be there. I don't know why we stopped being... We wanted to find, I think, a buffet venue, because we were all... It took us a long time to all order our meals and so forth. And at the Garden Cafe, we just kind of go through the buffet line, and then we're ready to hear our presentations.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll look forward to the chalk this way.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is a presentation about the Charters of Freedom Monument by Foundation Forward, Inc. I would welcome Mr. Vance to come forward. Hi, Mr. Vance Patterson. And do you have his thing... Okay.
It's a real honor to be here today in your chamber and make a presentation. I've done this presentation or something like it all across the country, from Bertie County, North Carolina, to Honolulu, and y'all have a really nice facility here and a very professional staff, so I hope everything works. My name is Vance Patterson. I'm from Burke County, North Carolina. That's about halfway between Hickory and Asheville. My address is 4950 Canterbury Place in Morganton. I'm a father of four, married 42 years to my wife, Mary Jo. I'm a businessman, a manufacturer. I have a company that makes industrial fans. We actually make things out of metal, ship them across the country and around the world. Business is really good right now, and that allows me to do that about which you're going to see in this presentation. Normally, I tell a story, but I think you all have already heard it, so we've got a video that kind of puts everything into a nutshell, about a three-minute nutshell, and then I'll be happy to ask, answer questions after we get done.
Unfortunately, a lot of people don't get to go to Washington, DC and see our founding documents.
So many people that I talked to don't know what the Charters of Freedom are. When we explain, they say, "Oh, yeah, 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 I've heard about those." It's very important that the students not only know about the history, but why they should have pride in these documents.
Back in 2011, my wife and I were up in Washington, DC, visiting with some congressmen and some of the organizations up there. We had some free time, so we decided to go over to the National Archives. You walk through these big bronze gates into this rotunda, and there are the founding documents over on the other side of the room. These are known as your Charters of Freedom. The first time I saw the Declaration of Independence, something our founding fathers had actually penned, and saw their signatures, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Rutledge, and the others, I just got goosebumps. I remember the thought came to me, what if I could duplicate the experience I had up in Washington, the first time we saw the Charters of Freedom? What if I could bring that experience back to the citizens of Burke County? Then, on July 2, 2014, we dedicated the first Charters of Freedom monument outside of Washington, DC.
From an educational standpoint, for our children to actually see it within their home counties, be able to touch it, feel it, and view it, it's a huge deal for veterans as well as our children.
Imagine, if you will, third and fourth grade school teachers bringing their classes here for annual field trips to learn a little about the documents, a little about our government, our founding fathers, and also about state and local history while they're here.
I think with the educational system, teachers and educators are sometimes limited by the materials and just time. So, to be able to provide teachers with the educational materials that they can use to kind of focus their visits to these sites, that's exciting to me.
When they talk of their Charters of Freedom in their hometown, remembering that their fourth-grade school teacher took them down and taught them about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence, we're in the beginning of what could be a massive re-education of our founding principles.
Our goal as a foundation is to set monuments in as many communities as possible over the next nine years, to provide access to our founding documents in the communities, so the children, people of these communities, don't have to go all the way to Washington, DC to experience these documents in a proper setting. But they will no longer talk about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington. They'd be talking about their Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with, right in their home community.[1761.04][1761.04](music) There are 3,142 counties, boroughs, parishes, independent cities, census zones, and the District of Columbia in the United States. We have a foundation, it's called Foundation Forward. It's a 501(c)(3), and our goal is to set monuments in as many communities as possible of those communities as possible in the next nine years. The reason it's nine years is because if we double every year, that's how long it takes. Since the... Since we put in this first monument, my wife and I have gifted six monuments to communities around the country. The last one was down in Columbia, South Carolina, dedicated May 26th. We've got another one going in Jackson County, Western North Carolina, in Silva, and it'll be dedicated sometime in November. My purpose of being here today is to tell you a little about it, and also propose that you all consider accepting a gift from Foundation Forward of this monument for the children and citizens of Omaha. There are no tax dollars involved. We would ask for your support in doing community support, and then we would take everything from there. So that's what I have to say today. Questions?
Well, I just want to thank you. You know, there's a lot of very cool things we do, and this is one that you kind of said that you get goosebumps about. When Ron came and visited us a few weeks ago and showed us a presentation and a PowerPoint, I think the board was very engaged and excited, and I think you've solidified it today with your presentation. And so I look very, very forward to moving forward with you on this project. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, it's, first of all, it's a terrific project. Really, I, I too did the same thing you did in Washington, and it's really a stand-in line to get goosebumps kind of thing. It was, it's really terrific, and what you're doing is a really great idea. I really like it. And of course, sitting on this side of the, of the group here, my first thought is, what's this going to cost, you know? And so I did glance at the, you know, very quickly, the really nice material you've got to get together, but it sounds like what, that our obligation is some basic work like the site work and sprinklers and a few other things. Can you get into that a little bit further? I mean, are you saying that you would pay for everything but the groundwork, the basic work?
Yeah, we asked the county or the community to do the site preparation, and one of the reasons is, the first one we put in, the mayor's Christmas tree was right in the middle of it that they picked out. It was an oak, so they had to clear that out.
We don't have a mayor's Christmas tree.
Anything like that, groundwater, electrical lines, you know, it's up to you where you put it. You know, you all select the site.
So that would be our responsibility.
To select the site and then do the site work.
And then you, you come in and do all this granite?
We do the excavation, the setting of the monument, the finish work, and then we ask you to do the landscaping. If you just want to plant grass, that's fine, but that's all the community has to come up with.
Where do we sign?
Pardon me?
Where do we sign?
Oh, well, there's work to be done. You know, the ones that we're doing now, obviously, my wife and I can't gift these to everybody. So when I say community support, we do look for people in the community to step up and be a part of it.
Sure.
You can ask me the cost if you want.
Pardon me?
You can ask me the cost of the monument if you want.
What is the cost of the monument?
The first ones came in around $70,000, $73,000, something like that. It has come down. It depends on what the fascia is. If you want granite or limestone, it's in the $60,000 to $70,000 range. If you want brick, it's closer to $25,000. But they're all the same. We go down three and a half feet in the ground, do reinforced poured concrete, and then we come up and do a reinforced poured concrete core, and around that goes the fascia, whether it's granite, four inches of granite, four inches of limestone, or, or brick. And then the documents are all on quarter-inch etched bronze. Each one weighs over 60 pounds. The font has been changed so that you can read it, but the signatures are the original signatures. And then it's covered with a half-inch of polycarbonate that's been treated. So it's, these, these are designed to last 300 to 500 years. And it is an education project. It's about educating our students and the community on how government works and on the history.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Patterson saw the presentation a few weeks ago here, and just want to thank you and your wife, Mary Jo, very much for this generous offer to our county and also what you're doing around the United States. I think it's great for young people and all of us to see and realize how fortunate we are to be in America. So I know that Commissioner Borgeson will be bringing this back so we can have a vote on it maybe next week or the week after, and I certainly plan to support this and have it move along, and I think all the commissioners are probably saying the same thing I'm saying. So thank you for what you're doing. It's great.
You're welcome. And if it does move forward, you'll get to meet Mary Jo. She'll be here for the, certainly for the dedication.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. I'm working on a project right now and have been for the past nine, 10 months. If you want it on this campus, you also have to go in front of the Building Commission, or perhaps our two members of the Building Commission can take the idea forward. But the Building Commission is the one who would be accepting it pretty much because they'd be responsible for the upkeep of it and the maintenance.
Upkeep and maintenance is very little.
We have to look at that because we actually own the courthouse. We may be doing it in conjunction with the Building Commission, but it would be this board that approves.
I clean the glass on ours once a week when I get a chance down in downtown Morganton. It looks the same as it did the day it was installed. It's been over two years now, so it's, they're holding up well.
I don't, I don't see anybody, I cannot imagine anybody saying no. I really can't.
Okay.
Okay.
No other lights from commissioners? Again, thank you so much. We look forward to moving forward and I, you've been working with Catherine from our staff, you and Ron, and so if there's certain documents that, when I bring this back next week for approval to move forward, if there's something we need to have in that packet, if you could...
What we do is, once you all vote that this is something, you will accept the gift. You need to decide on where it is, and then we exchange letters of intent. We send you a letter that says, we intend to do this, and it'll be a gift, and you all say, we, we intend to accept the gift and put it on this, whatever the site is.
Okay.
And then we open the, get the process going.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have one more presentation, presentation by Operation New Success. Huh?
I can see you.
Oh. And Commissioner Rogers and I sit on the Steering Committee for Operation New Success, and we thought it was important to give an update, just way of background and kind of memory jogging. When we had FSG come in and do a collective impact process with us, one of the things was to build a backbone organization to move the initiative forward. And since that time, or out of that came Operation New Success, and we felt it was important to have them come forward and give us an update on what has been happening. So Janay?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Rogers, did you want to say anything? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you again for this opportunity to, Chairperson Borgeson's comments earlier. We've been in existence for a little bit, but the FSG, there's a timeline in here, so I'll get into that, but I just really want to say thank you for your time and consideration this morning. My name is Janay Pankook. I'm the Executive Director of Operation New Success. We're located at the UNO Community Engagement Center at 60001 Dodd Street, Omaha, Nebraska There's a lot of information in this PowerPoint. I'm not going to obviously read it to you or cover each bullet point. It's just for you to refer back to. And if you have any questions, of course, I'm always available to answer any questions if Commissioner Borgeson or Commissioner Rogers don't, aren't available or need more specifics. So the juvenile justice system exists, exists in a context of various laws, policies, and funding streams that are consistently changing, and that adds to the complexity of the system, and it also adds to the complexity of what our families and communities and our youth face. That's one of the reasons that I believe the county even started the initiative with FSG, is to delve deeper into this and find these solutions that could help with the customer service end of juvenile justice in Douglas County. There's a pretty good feeling with the public that even at juvenile justice, it should level, it should be punitive, the system should be punitive as opposed to rehabilitative, rehabilitative, or restorative. And so that also adds to the complexity of the system because we have sometimes opposing points of view that are working. And then another significant piece is disproportionate minority contact, which is at all levels. It's from contact in the, in our communities, in the streets with police, all the way through ticketing, detention, probation, and then reentry services. Disproportionate minority contact is a main theme that runs through all of the entities that are dealing or working within juvenile justice. The next slide is just a brief kind of timeline of juvenile justice throughout the state, and you'll notice there are some pretty significant legislative changes that had happened. And the challenge with that is not only is it affect the state, but in the service providers, but the reality is the consumer at the end, the customer, the youth and the families are the ones that really end up carrying the weight when these significant system changes happen. There's an enormous amount of research that talks about every time the system changed from the state being the holder of, say, crossover youth or child welfare or even juvenile justice to private contractors, there's a five-year gap in trying to get services up to speed that those families are affected by that. It takes them that long because of those relationships are hindered or broken that they had with caseworkers, case managers. So every time those happen, there's this unintended consequence, but the families and youth and communities are the ones that end up really having the most to adjust to more than just our systems. The next slide is mapping of the juvenile justice system. Obviously, it's a very complex system with numerous stakeholders and youth, again, youth and families and our community really are left to navigate. When you look at the systems pieces, a lot of us are in our siloed system. We know our policies, procedures, our expectations, our guidelines, our rules within the system. But if you're a youth or a family member, your expectation is to know the entire system, right? And as you can tell, it's extremely complex, the language is different, you're dealing with different people all the time. So that's kind of a background of why I believe FSG was brought in, and now that has transitioned to OYS. Your next slide is a, kind of tried to hit the significant events or the timeline of Operation New Success and the private-public partnership venture that was established. Currently, the OYS budget is $240,000 private funding and $206,870 public funding, and that's all through community-based aid dollars, so we are 100% grant-funded organization. There are no county hard dollars going into that, out of the county budget at this time. We have been, Operation New Success has been named the Steering Committee, the Douglas County Community Team for as far as community-based aid is concerned. And we've also been recognized as the facilitators of the Douglas County Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan related to juvenile justice, which allows us to receive community-based aid. And it's also utilized countywide for a bunch of other organizations that apply for grants. There's an enormous amount of data and history in that document. The next slide is the mission statement that was set forth through the work of FSG interviewing and participating in various work groups, talking with community, over 200 stakeholders in the community. And every time I read this, there's a couple parts that really stand out to me. Eliminates the need for youth being involved in the juvenile justice system. To me, that's a very powerful, strong word, and I think that word was really intentional and deliberated by the stakeholders to eliminate the need for the juvenile justice system. The other piece that I usually receive quite a bit of feedback about, and I think this reflects where a lot of individuals believe that juvenile justice should be punitive, is compassionate, that the system really should not be compassionate necessarily, that that shouldn't be one of the benchmarks. And so I think there, that lends itself to there's a lot of education and work to be done as far as that goes to inform people about why compassionate care of our youth and our families is a benchmark. The next slide you will find is the current stakeholders, and they're obviously where the majority of the work comes from. That's our Steering Committee membership. You'll notice it's a very diverse membership Steering Committee that are at levels within various agencies that can really affect policy, practice, and procedure, and implement cultural changes needed to advance the goals that were previously stated of the mission statement as far as juvenile justice. On the right side, myself, Amber Parker, is a program manager, and we currently have two positions open. The next slide breaks out our work groups and kind of how everything aligns. We do have a juvenile justice league that is comprised of 14 to 25-year-olds who are currently or previously involved in the juvenile justice league. They also meet monthly and provide feedback as to, you know, what was effective, what wasn't effective, what could the system do better, their experiences. We have, out of these working groups and the Steering Committee, we have approximately 120 individuals participating in various work groups, and each work group meets about 1.5 to 2 hours per month, working on their action plans. The work group membership has actually evolved, and I expect that will continue to happen over time. When the work groups were first formulated, it was recommendations from the Steering Committee at the time, actually, the Steering Committee has even evolved over time. But the, as more defined action plans, as gaps have been identified, as needs have been identified, those people have been recruited to come to the table and participate, which I believe is a good thing, that those work groups, the Steering Committee is not stagnant. It needs to be representative of what's been identified as the need for Douglas County to address those challenges that we've noted in the juvenile justice system. Where we've been, being a public-private entity has its bonuses and its challenges, to say the least. I think we stretch both systems and we make both systems of a nonprofit world and of a public world uncomfortable at times. And it's taken us some, some time, and it's going to continue to take us time to get our legs in understanding what that means and what the implications are. So we're always looking to find new partners, as I said earlier, connect with families, gain that youth voice. We want to find champions and momentum for change that'll keep us moving in a positive direction for juvenile justice. And the biggest question that we try and resonate and that I know is kind of my mantra is, any decision, any policy, who are asking to the work groups, is really, how does this help youth, families, and our community? How does this decision help that? How does it support the work we're doing? And if there's not a clear answer to that, then we need to rethink the question, we need to rethink the solution that we've come up with. The fam, the next slide is the Families Work Group, and just, just some highlights out of there. Oh, this slide was tricky for me. Here we go. Okay, Families Work Group. So we have, one of their projects they're really working on is a systems navigation, which earlier slide showed the mapping of the juvenile justice system. We're trying to break that down and make it family-user friendly and have it in a bilingual or even trilingual language, and also make a video of that that could be available on our website and/or any other community partner that would like to have it available so that families potentially reading or comprehension of reading isn't the best, even if we try and put very technical language into layman's terms, that maybe visually it would be more applicable or more helpful to those individuals. Making sure that it's, also service mapping is another thing they're working on in conjunction with United Way of the Midlands. So where are the services? What do they provide? That also helps us identify gaps. The next work group is Prevention Work Group. This was actually one of the most challenging work groups, starting out. Prevention, where does that start? Is it baby formula? Is it what kind of preschool they go to, individuals go to, all the way, what services are available? Trauma-informed care is a big piece of this. So identifying risk factors and increasing the juvenile's likelihood to engage in delinquent behaviors is really where they've landed now, in trying to find providers that, culturally competent providers, that can address those gaps. The Schools Work Group started out as three, as one work group, and after not a whole lot of time, figured out there's really three task force areas, and they're around schools-based arrests. arrest, which has been instrumental in people understanding the OPS Code of Conduct. And then, actually, we just had a really good scenario with school resource officers being trained for Douglas County, all of them went through the National School Resource Officer Certification Training, and we're all certified in Douglas County now. And Deputy Chief Doug Gonzalez has already shared a story from this year of an incident at a school that involved marijuana residual, or residue, excuse me, residue, and there could have been a ticket issued, but they followed the school's code of conduct as opposed to getting the youth engaged that had a clean record. That was the only incident they've ever had with this student. Previously, probably would have been a ticket, gotten that person into the juvenile justice system. They decided, follow the code of conduct, let's not have them get engaged in the juvenile justice system. School Reentry Work Group is really focused on specifically that credit recovery, working with all the touch points where kids may be out of their school, homeschool, and getting them back in, in a smooth transition, that the school's ready for them, the supports are there, they're getting credit for all the schoolwork they've been doing wherever they were at, and hopefully keeping them in school instead of the youth coming to school, and then the school administration saying, we're not ready for you, we didn't know you were coming, and sending them back home. We might not ever get that youth back to school if something like that happens, so let's keep them there once they're there, trying to smooth those aspects out. The other piece that was, happened this summer was the Strategies for Youth, did a training for policing the teen brain, and that was really all about adolescents, frontal lobe development, informing those that are in levels that can make decisions about detaining youth, not detaining services, do we ticket a youth participated in that training, which hopefully, again, will have a long-term effect of less, yet less youth being ticketed and detained. The Policy Work Group just started in May, and their focus is going to be the focus on status offenders, runaway population. Is there really, truly, a legitimate reason to detain youth for nonviolent status offenses? So that's what they're going to start delving into and working in more, much more depth with that. And then, just this last, this last week at our Steering Committee, a community engagement work group is going to be initiated, so stay tuned for that. They're still working on their action plan and their goals and objectives. The wins so far for Operation Youth Success, we have been charged with the facilitation of the processes for the community-based aid that the county receives, which is approximately $1.7 million from the Nebraska Crime Commission. We've really tried to make that more transparent. There's requests for purchases now, applications, it goes through several levels, vetting, a standardized rubric to score them, and then comes before the Steering Committee, which is been identified as a community team, before it goes to the Crime Commission. We also are doing sub-grant adjustments with great help of the county administration to ensure those dollars are being used most effectively and efficiently in a timely fashion. By doing those quarterly adjustments, we know how much budget there is remaining and where in the service areas do we want to put those dollars, as opposed to waiting towards the end of the fiscal year. Where we're going. So we really want to focus on pre-law enforcement contact, post-law enforcement or detention prevention. For those that are aware of the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, JADI, you'll hear that referred to, they're really focused on detention, and so we try to complement before detention and after detention. We work in collaboration with each other. We share a few of their work groups that had been established. We now share the data and the case processing, excuse me, work groups, so that we are trying to be seamless and hopefully, again, enhance the efficiencies, but not only our efficiencies, but those for the customers, for our consumers. So what's different? There's some quotes there from different members of different work groups, but the thing I think that reflects that what's different the biggest is that a Steering Committee's committee member, excuse me, said, thinking bigger picture about relationships and departments, again, breaking down those silos. So we understand, walking in another person's shoes, sometimes if you're the county attorney versus public defender, it's easy to say, well, this should have been done, or that should have been done. But those relationships now are like, well, here's the reasons why this is happening the way it's happening, and maybe we can find that common ground, again, that enhances the experience, the outcomes for youth and families. I am able to engage in conversations differently with more knowledge on current community efforts. We provide our staff with trauma-informed care training from Project Harmony. And that, that came directly from a work group member that wasn't really aware of the trauma-informed care, nor the trainings that were available. So it's opening up these communications, this knowledge exchange, that hopefully, again, helps our families, our community, and our youth. We really, the last slide is the real goal that really, I guess, resonates with me, drives with me, is opposed to a systems-driven, here's our policies, procedures, the consumer is at the bottom of the pyramid, we're really flipping that upside down. We're the consumer, the youth, the family, get to drive the policies and procedures. So trying to flip it to a customer service center juvenile justice system that has access to quality service and programs for system-involved and non-involved youth. That was another learning from this was, many times there were services and programs and dollars available, but it was only after a youth was involved in the system, right? So that kind of defeats the purpose. We're trying to keep them out and still have services available to help them navigate the system and stay out of this juvenile justice system that has ramifications for the rest of their lives. A system where youth and families who come into contact with the system leave better than when they came in, the ultimate goal. Any questions? Thank you again for your time, very much, I really appreciate it.
No questions?
Lights from commissioners, appreciate the update, lots of information. So I think once they have the time to go back and kind of read it and absorb it, there may be.
Yeah, please, contact me anytime. Hopefully, my cards were on those, so I, anytime, I'd love to visit with any of you about the work we're doing.
Commissioner Rogers.
In closing, I just want to, you know, give you all one comment, and I think this is the perspective that I think everybody at the table would admit, there's like low-hanging fruit, mid-hanging fruit, but many of you are familiar with Joe Emerson, the late Joe Emerson.
Yep.
He had a saying, and I think this, this work is equivalent to that. He used to say, this is not magic, it's hard work. And I think this is equivalent to that, and the magically come about, there's some painstaking processes going through with this. So to everybody involved, as we get a feel for each other, get used to open meetings, try to create a system, that's just the process that we're in to try to change what's going on. So thank everybody involved, and everybody's patience to get this far, and then hopefully, after two years, we're at a pivot point of growth, and hopefully, we can, you know, keep moving forward.
And I think, Janay, it's important that maybe we schedule quarterly updates to the board, so it's not kind of this overwhelming load of information.
Right.
Next time, that we kind of are a little bit more up to date, and that might be helpful to commissioners to stay the course with us.
You bet.
Okay.
Great, thank you again.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Melanie.
I'm Melanie Williams-Smitherman, Family Advocacy Movement, and a stakeholder in the process that started with FSG coming to our county to conduct interviews with many different people across many different interests. I'm always approaching this issue from the standpoint of families and children and the As I often will say, mission statements are always brilliant, they're flawless. And everyone who comes up and presents their programs, you know, they'll, they'll admit a little bit to problems with those programs, but they'll never go into detail about those. And I think that's a serious omission if we're truly going to be approaching these issues, which are very complex, in an honest way that takes into account not only the successes, but the, the failures, because unless we bring those things to the forefront, unless the public is aware of these issues, they won't ever be dealt with appropriately or adequately. On Thursday morning, there was an OYS Steering Committee meeting, which saw an influx of public comment and, and participation because of one of these serious breaches and failures of the process. And I'm bringing this forward because it's something that must be discussed openly, and we have to approach this in an honest and open way. As one of the stakeholders that brings kind of a counterview to a lot of the system approaches and system perspectives, I'm not always a well-liked or welcomed person to this discussion, but I would argue that I'm a necessary part of the process because, well, that's, it's kind of obvious. But I gave a private confidential interview to FSG, which I believe included some public money in that investment process. And I was with a colleague, who you all are very familiar with, Laura McCormick, and we went in together, and we presented documentation and some very sharp critiques of much of what you've heard us come up and speak about. We named names, we were concerned about a lot of the issues with regard to the structure and the workings of the system that we don't think are properly addressed. And we often don't have that open door to be able to do that. We have to choose very selective opportunities to be able to raise our concerns about these issues, and this is one of those places for five minutes when we are able to come forward. We learned through the, the digging, I think it came forward accidentally, but we learned through the digging of Laura McCormick in her, you know, public records requests, and revelations through emails with various people involved with this process, that our interviews were, our confidential interviews were breached, that that information, that the FSG's information that they collected that had our names attached to our comments were actually out there with who knows whom. But within this county, we're not strangers. The people who were giving interviews with FSG were all people who others recognize, they know. People, you know, I'm not going to speak for the debt, the damage that's done to, you know, professionals who gave interviews, but I can tell you from an advocate standpoint, a community activist standpoint, where I'm volunteering my time to attempt to improve this system for families and children, I am extremely concerned that my comments not only made it to UNO, people at UNO, but then made it to a privately contracted company in Minnesota that is contracted through Sherwood Foundation, publicly gathered information, handed over to a company that is contracted with, contracted.
This is the monthly test of the Emergency Alert System for the Broadcast and Cable Systems of Nebraska. Equipment is being tested that can quickly provide warnings during emergencies. If this had been an actual emergency, official messages would have followed the alert tone. This concludes this test of the Emergency Alert System.
And we find out that, just out of the blue, that Janay Pankook actually has a copy also of all of our comments attributed to us on a private computer and a flash drive. That was never offered during the meeting. I think that we need to spend some more time publicly discussing what it is we're doing here. And, you know, when people say, well, the public-private partnership is, you know, has growing pains, there are learning curves, there are real victims to that, and we need to be able to have a voice in what, whether that's acceptable.
No other questions or comments? We will move to our public hearing. We have one, a resolution granting public approval within the meaning of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended of the issuance by the Douglas County Housing Authority of its multifamily housing revenue bonds, 30 Metropolitan Place Project, in the principal amount not to exceed 11 million, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquisition, construction, and equipping of a multifamily housing facility to be known as 30 Metropolitan Place Apartments located in Omaha by 30 Metropolitan Place Apartments LLC, which bonds in the interest thereon shall be payable solely from the loan repayments made by the borrower. This is the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this item, now is the time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and there is action that can be taken today if it's the will of the board. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, signed by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
The address is on North 30th, I believe.
I couldn't find where on 30th.
It was.
5300 or something.
It was in here.
I don't know.
Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Rogers.
It was 5319 North 30th Street.
Commissioner Rogers. Okay, there we go. Motion passes.
We'll move to committees, the first being the Finance, with just the budget report as presented, unless there's questions or comments. Administrative Services, we have one, discussion and approval of a lease with Burlington State Lines, LDT, DBA Burlington Trailways, and Iowa Corporation, and Jerry or Jeff is here. They want to give us a little briefing of what we're doing here.
Morning, Jeff.
Morning. Jeff McGill, Public Properties. Someone left their phone up here.
Uh-oh.
They'll be back.
There's probably somebody.
As everyone knows, this property was purchased as part of the Corrections Master Plan back in 2013. At this time, we didn't have any particular use, so we wanted to continue the lease agreement with Trailways. We had discussions with them, so we wanted to extend the lease from a 30-day, or month-to-month lease to a two-year lease. With that, we thought the, that would give enough time for us and them to pursue other opportunities that we feel we could use the building for, and they could search for other properties. There's a 90-day termination clause in this contract that we both felt is fair, given the. the opportunity, which way, if we wanted to use the facility, it'd take probably 90 days or more to assemble what we were going to do and give them enough time to search for theirs.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, we've discussed this in the text of the Administrative Services Committee, and it looks like a good move on our part relative to continuing what's been a pretty successful relationship with Burlington on a property that we acquired some years ago. And if it runs the terminal lease with a couple of extensions, I think we come very close, if not completely, past the original purchase price of the property. So the lease has done a great job in helping us offset the price the county paid for this property, and it retains an important component of our Douglas County Corrections Campus in Douglas County hands for future use. So it's a good deal.
It is.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I have asked this before, and it's probably really a very tangent kind of question, but I drive by there frequently because I'm in the downtown area a lot, and I see passengers sitting on the steps and kind of hanging out and so forth. Are there any vending machines or anything where they can get water or outside of the fountain? I mean, is there anything inside that gives these travelers a little bit of relief?
I think there's vending machines inside. I haven't been in there for a while, but when we first initiated the property, purchased the property, I was in there, and they did at that time.
I guess, I mean, I was stopping, looking there too, but it seems like it'd be nice to have someplace to get a sandwich or a soft drink or water, and I just don't know what's inside there, and I'm just curious. And also, any seating?
There is seating.
Okay.
And I can go down there and check, Commissioner. And we can get ahold of Trailways.
Okay.
See if they would consider that.
I'll stop in too and take a look, because I'm there quite a bit. I took one of those buses one time. There was a snowstorm in Missouri, and I, Ann was there, and she had to get back to Omaha, so she drove, and I took a bus back, and it was a trip. But nice time, interesting people.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. This seems like a good deal, and I certainly intend to support it. My question is, the 90-day out, is that by either party? Either party can give the other one 90 days' notice?
That's correct.
Fine. Very good. Thank you.
With that, we can take action?
I was going to offer an amendment to name it the Mike Boyle Transportation Center.
We can add that to the list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Thanks, Jeff.
Motion passes.
Human Resources Committee, weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, and just FYI, the interim study schedule is out, so if any of those, anyone would like to talk about, let me know, and we'll put it on the agenda. We do have need for executives.
Just make one point under legislative issues. About two weeks ago, there was a national JDAI meeting here, where some people came to Hilton across the country, and we were in a meeting with Senator Chris, and I just want to put it on the record to look, to put there. There was one point made that I made to Senator Chris, and I don't know if we can talk a little bit about it. We floated it a while, a couple of years ago, but it was, at least for some things, we were doing juvenile-wise and some other areas where we end up being the scapegoat because it's really us, and then they start melodizing stuff to fit the other counties. I floated this thing to them about some type of waiver, some county waiver that allowed, you know, us to be able to do some things to play without putting 92 other counties in around that we're at and they may not be at. So I just wanted to be full disclosure with everybody, if that, somehow it pops up, I brought that up in some discussion. So I don't know where it ends up, but just wanted to bring it up legislative-wise.
You might want to, Marcos, just make a note, and can either work on it or keep an eye out. I mean, with that, we do have need for executive session for personnel.
So vote.
Please vote. Community Services Committee and, I can't read the...
903.
903, and then the Administrative Services after we are adjourned from here.
No, Administrative Services, next one.
Oh, sorry, just Community Services. Read it wrong.
I know it's fun to be here a little bit.